Madam Clerk, the time is 7:15 PM. I call to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pat?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. Take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Pat, second by Member Donahue to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Patz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Are there ex parte communications? Seeing none, public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda? Seeing none, the consent calendar is their emotion.
Removed.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by Member Martinez to approve consent. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Patz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The time is 7:15. This meeting is adjourned. Time is 7:16. I call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville's regular meeting. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve this agenda with -- before we do that, I'd like to make a request of council. Item 12.4 is the PERS item. Council, if it pleases you, would you be willing to waive presentation on this item tonight?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public here to speak on item 12.4? I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move 12.4 ahead of item 12.1, otherwise to approve the agenda as proposed.
I'll second that.
I had a lot of seconds. I'm going to say motion by Mayor Bowder, second by Member Donahue to approve agenda, moving 12.4 in front of 12.1. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Patz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Agenda is approved. Item 4. Item 4.1 is a proclamation related to National Adoption Month. So, November is National Adoption Month, and we felt it was important here in the City of Emeryville to recognize that and to also recognize a community stakeholder of ours, PACT, which is a member of an adoption alliance, to talk about the importance of adoption in Emeryville. So, I'll begin with a proclamation proclaiming November 2018 is National Adoption Month in the City of Emeryville. Whereas the first major effort to promote awareness of the need for adoptive families for foster children in the foster care system came in 1976, and now each year in cities all across the United States, November is recognized as National Adoption Awareness Month. And while all adoption-related issues are important, the focus of this month is the adoption of children currently in foster care. And whereas this year's National Adoption Month theme is, in their own words, lifting up youth voices, which is an effort to shine a light on the plight of older kids since it is well-known that teenagers are far less likely to be adopted and are at risk of aging out of foster care without stable family support. And whereas the goal of this theme is to provide opportunities for young people to effectively share their perspectives on the foster care experience, whether they've been reunited with their family, achieved permanency with an adoptive family, or entered adulthood independently, which can help educate communities and shape child welfare and adoption processes and policies. And whereas adoption creates supportive, loving families for children and teens, which can help a child or teen overcome past traumatic experiences and reach their full potential. And whereas there are no restrictions on who can adopt based on race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation or expression, gender identity or marital status. And whereas there is always a need for parents who are willing to adopt siblings, older youth, and young people with complex medical and behavioral needs. And whereas there are numerous individuals, nonprofit organizations, and public servants who are dedicated to finding families for children and teens in foster care who are waiting to be adopted. Now therefore be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council, I hereby proclaim November 2018 as National Adoption Month in the City of Emeryville, and I call for the community to come together to celebrate local adoptive families and raise awareness about the number of children and teens who are still waiting for their home. Proclaim this 13th day of November 2018 at a regular City Council meeting by the Mayor of Emeryville. And I would like to invite -- I knew I was going to do it. Malaika, right? Thank you. Malaika, would you come up here with me? So, Malaika's from PACT, and she's going to speak in a moment. But PACT, as I'm going to explain here in a second, is an adoption support agency, nonprofit here in the City of Emeryville, if you're not familiar, and they've been here for quite a while, actually. And we wanted to recognize them for their work during Adoption -- National Adoption Month. And so, this is a proclamation recognizing PACT during National Adoption Month 2018 in the City of Emeryville. Whereas the City of Emeryville has proclaimed 2018 -- November of 2018 is National Adoption Month. And whereas it is estimated that there are 80,000 children in foster care in California with roughly 50,000 of those children in need of permanent homes, making the need for qualified adults to serve as adoptive parents important to the health and future of children all across our state. And whereas in celebration of that occasion, the Mayor and the City Council of Emeryville wish to recognize PACT, an Emeryville-based nonprofit organization whose mission is to serve adopted children of color for their work on behalf of children and families in our community. And whereas PACT was incorporated as a nonprofit in 1991 to serve African-American, Latino, Asian, and multiracial children in need of adoption placement, as well as lifelong education, support, and community, and maintains its offices on Doyle Street here in Emeryville. And whereas PACT's goal is for every child to feel wanted, honored, and loved as a cherished member of a strong family with proud connections to the rich cultural heritage that is his or her birthright. And whereas PACT is a strong advocate for honesty and authenticity in matters of race and adoption, working to ensure that the connections between adopted children and adults to their birth family and birth heritage are both respected and maintained. And whereas one of the most important roles PACT plays in their active -- is their -- plays in their act of confrontation is of adoptism. Adoptism. A social prejudice that challenges the legitimacy of the choice to place a child for adoption or to build one from adoption. And whereas through their work, PACT supports families of color that wish to adopt, promotes shared birth heritage between adoptive parents and adopted children, and helps transracial adoptive parents who support the cultural heritage and identity of adopted child. And whereas PACT recognizes the challenges of same-sex parents in a heterosexual society, providing support and placement services to LGBTQ adoptive parents without any limits or restrictions. And whereas PACT actively recruits families who want to adopt children of color into their homes as their first choice, and work to make sure every person or parent who is considering what to do with their child understands their rights and options, regardless of whether or not it is their final choice. And whereas PACT lifts up the voice of the adoptee, understanding that they are the true mission and focus of the adoption process, and that children are necessary collaborators in a process and experience that will last their entire life. And whereas it is through these efforts that PACT contributes to make our community a more just and equitable place for adoptees, birth parents, and adoptive parents alike, now therefore be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby recognize PACT for their work to promote familial relationships, build social stability for children and adoptive parents rooted in respect for cultural identity and heritage, and most importantly, for the value they place on the role of the voice of the adoptee as children are and must remain the focus of the adoption process. Proclaim this 13th day of November 2018 at a regular council meeting by the Mayor of Emeryville. Please join me in welcoming them.
I'm sorry.
Ignore me. Would you like to do it first?
I can introduce it.
Yeah, if you want to speak and introduce it. And then, you want me to just click it when she's ready to play it?
Yeah, it's going to be right with that little area.
Yeah, you just tell me when you want to play it.
So, that wasn't as seamless as I imagined it being. So, I work with PACT and Adoption Alliance, and my job is to support people of color who are thinking about adopting or who have adopted. As an adoptive parent myself, my job is to build a community for families like mine. And at the center of that community is how do we support our children? As an adoptive parent, I am raising children in this society and through a system that looks at me as the customer, but through our work at PACT, we're trying to shift it so that the world of adoption looks at the child as the customer and that we acknowledge the things that might make us as the adults comfortable actually make for a harder and more difficult time for our children. And so, we're really trying to push on that idea. So, in that spirit, I bought a video with -- I bought a video here to share with you that just kind of highlights some of the work that we do. We do programming all year long, but one of the kind of highlights of our work is a camp that now actually happens twice a year, one on the West Coast and one on the East Coast, and it's about building community and connections for children and for parents. So, we're going to play -- I'm going to play a little video.
Some valuable things that I have learned at PACT Camp is that I'm able to freely express myself without having any judgment from anyone, and that other people can relate to it just because I'm not the only person who's been through that experience here.
The counselors at camp are really supportive, and they're there for you if you really need it, and they're not afraid to talk to you, and you don't need to be afraid to talk to them because they'll listen to you.
PACT Camp has been a valuable experience for me because I'm able to meet new people and share my story and learn about other people's stories, and I love the bonds that I've made with friends and family, and I love PACT Camp, and it's a safe place for me to be.
At other camps that I go to, people aren't as -- a lot of people aren't adopted or they're not like me, and here, I feel like it's kind of like my home and a lot of other people aren't like me, and it makes me feel happy.
Because counselors at camp are important because then if we're feeling upset about something, we could just go to them and ask them a question and ask, like, "I'm not feeling really good right now. Can I just sit out for a little bit?" In the activities.
It feels very good to be sharing stories with other people because, like, I get to express my feelings and how my family is and stuff like that.
My skin is black, and the tita's skin is black like me. Then...
All the country makes me feel happy.
Where are you?
That super cute kid at the end was one of mine. So, our work at PACT is really highlighted in this video. We really honor the voices of adoptees. We acknowledge that in order for children who join their family through adoption to join our families, they've also lost a family, and often they've lost a community, and they've lost connection. And we live in a society that kind of talks about that as if the children have gained so much. That's actually kind of hurtful to children because they've lost a family, they've lost connections. And so, we do a lot of work to really celebrate our kids and celebrate our community, but also acknowledge that there is pain and trauma that has existed, and a lot of times it is fueled by our inability as a society to deal with poverty and our inability as a society to deal with addiction and racism, and that that's fueling a lot of the reasons that children are placed through private adoption and foster care. And so, in this month of adoption and acknowledging adoption awareness, we really are hoping that folks will take a look at how they can support adoptees in their community, how they can look at how they think about adoption, and also just kind of push on practices that allow for children to be removed from their families for a lot of times not good reason, that allow for us to kind of treat children as though the loss of their family is something to be celebrated, and that treat children who join their family through adoption as an other or as if something is wrong with them, and that we look -- that we as a society are able to hold all of the different pieces of who our children are and celebrate them, acknowledge the loss, and acknowledge the beauty and the complexity that exist with them. So, thank you. Thank you for acknowledging us. Thank you for being here this evening. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to ask you to say something. Don't worry.
Okay.
Don't leave just yet. Please don't leave just yet. Sorry. But I did -- we don't normally have discussion on special orders of the day, but there is a council member up here to my far left. Councilmember Patz is an adoptive parent himself, and I would just like to ask the community to join me in thanking Councilmember Patz first for being an adoptive parent. And then, I would like to invite you to say some things because I know you have some thoughts.
So, I really want to focus on PACT, and thank you for the work that you do. As both my family being created through adoption, I'm very -- I was or am very active in the community, and, you know, PACT always comes up as such an amazing support system. My area of interest is focused on first mothers, and I've worked with the On Your Feet Foundation, and that overlaps a lot with PACT and the amazing work that you guys do. And I can tell you, I've met numbers of families that were created through your support and guidance, and I just want to personally thank you and your organization for the amazing work that you guys do. It's just getting to know the families and the kids and the, you know, the first moms in different settings and seeing the importance of letting people know that they're not the only ones out there experiencing these things has just been incredible. So, thank you.
Thank you again for coming this evening, and thank you for all the work you do, especially on behalf of children of color. I work in a service designed around trauma-informed care, and there's just so much need to provide loving homes and space and lift up children in need right now, but especially to ensure that we protect their cultural heritage and identity, and I just really value your mission, so I appreciate you being here. Thank you. Okay. And with that, you may leave. I knew you were going to wait. You're like, "I'm not sure." Okay. Item 4.2 is a presentation, access to the dissemination of educational health information related to home cannabis growing. Before I invite our guests to come up, just as a piece of context, this is a special order and presentation. I had the distinct privilege of being asked to participate in a course at Mills College in the Public Policy Program this fall, and I was invited to be a client of a cohort of students in one of their classes, and I was assigned to an incredible all-star, all-female team and to present a policy question for their consideration. And so, presented to them was something we had discussed here previously that I obtained council's consent to continue with, which was, how do we inform the public in Emeryville about the different health consequences and risks associated with home growths of cannabis now that it's legal? And I was obviously excited to hear what they had to say, and I just want to really celebrate and lift up the class at Mills because the collaborative learning process they engaged in when they presented their proposal to me late last month was fantastic, and we had a really robust discussion about the various policy considerations. And so, I invited them to come here today. We narrowed all the options that were presented down to a couple, and invited them to come and do a brief presentation to the City Council for short discussion as to whether or not you have -- if you have questions for them about their research or their work, I would really encourage you to ask those this evening. But at this time, I know not everybody's here, but the team was Sharon, Tara, Jasmine, Laurel, Ingrid, Rebecca, and Anna Maria, and I would like to invite all or any of you who are going to present to come on up here and join us. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for inviting us. So, the four of us will be here representing the entire team tonight to address your question to research the intersection of public health and cannabis home growth. We're very excited to have you as our client and honored to be here to present to the full council. We researched this policy issue identifying the condition, significance, situation, and criteria. We did in-person as well as over-the-phone interviews with cannabis experts throughout the Bay Area. We researched California's laws and codes regarding implementation of Proposition 64, and our team of seven compiled the culmination of research, developed layers, alternatives that Mayor Bowders referenced earlier. Proposition 64 was passed by the voters in 2016 and authorizes residents to be able to grow up to six cannabis plants in their home or on their property. Prop 64 allows cities and counties to develop their own policies or restrictions. We suggest that Emeryville restricts their residents to only grow indoor cannabis growth for the greater public health. Oops. The next slide addresses the fungicide that is commonly used for indoor cannabis growth. It's called mycobutanol. It is highly effective as a killer of fungus that can grow on cannabis. When this fungicide is heated up or smoked, it breaks down into a highly toxic fume that poses serious immediate and long-term neurological, respiratory, cardiovascular, and thyroid problems. When eaten in edibles, it is cancerous and can stay in your body for decades without breaking down. It even appears in reproductive DNA of consumers, potentially affecting children. Mycobutanol is a common fungicide that's sold in Home Depot stores and other stores like that. I'm going to go then into the questions that we addressed as City of Emeryville client. We asked, can the City of Emeryville regulate products used on cannabis home growth? Would it be effective to -- would it be able to effectively protect public health? And without this regulation, could there be an education campaign that could be just as effective? We're going to -- I'm going to go into the criteria that we reviewed. We reviewed the questions with the lens of this criteria of effective protection of public health, equity, political feasibility, legality, and cost. We do acknowledge that regulatory options do have limits. Fungicides are regulated by state and federal law, and they can be purchased anywhere throughout the state of California. Registration for home growth using Los Banios as a model raises a question of equity, cost, and effectiveness concerns. We also discuss, can the city exercise or leverage on permits of cannabis businesses? So, we'll be going into the options further. I'm going to pass it on to my colleague, and she will go into option one.
Good evening. My name is Anna Maria, and I'm here to present option one, creating an accessible and inclusive public education program for all Emeryville residents interested in indoor home-grown cannabis for recreational purposes to know the potential health risks attached to it. This option requires the City of Emeryville to invest money into making a reader-friendly brochure with information already available on the California website. That is written in terminology and in various languages represented in the diverse population of the Emeryville residents, and then distribute this worldwide -- worldwide, citywide in locations easily accessible by residents interested in home growth. This would emulate the State of Oregon's education program and brochures, but would be replaced with California information. We recommend that this information is made to be displayed on the city website, in doctors' offices, home renovation stores such as Home Depots, and the cannabis dispensaries as a requirement with the renewal of cannabis business licenses. We estimate the cost to be around $21,000, and I will now pass this on to my colleague to present option number two.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca. I'm going to go over option number two, which is dispensary partnerships for education and training workshops. This option will include the literature produced for the public education campaign. It will also include establishing a partnership with local dispensaries in order to make this information available online and in stores. The city can provide this informational literature at any location that sells the seeds or plants to grow cannabis, and this information will include how to safely grow indoors and how to prevent fungus and pests on homegrown cannabis. So, one dispensary that we -- our team identified partnerships with dispensaries as an opportunity to unite industry experts and the City of Emeryville residents who wish to grow in their homes, because more than just storefronts, some dispensaries actually strive to create a community around wellness. For example, East Bay Therapeutics that we see here, they are a dispensary operating in Emeryville that has a delivery service, a wellness center, and they offer educational classes as well as a social club for participants to learn from one another, not just from experts. So, partnering with these dispensaries would allow the city to leverage existing infrastructure and relationships to promote the public health for those seeking to grow cannabis at home. We estimate the cost of this partnership to be at a minimum of $75,000 per year. This includes the costs for the previous printing of the literature, and it will also -- it can also be used to go towards subsidizing costs of educational classes which we would host at the dispensaries. And of course, these classes are going to go into how to avoid the use of the toxic fungicides and pesticides. Now, I'm going to pass it off to my colleague who will go into more detail about the wellness centers.
Thank you, Rebecca. Hello, my name is Ingrid, and I will be presenting on an example of a wellness center that we researched based here in the Bay Area. They are called Elemental Wellness Center, and they offer dispensary and delivery services to the City of San Jose. Elemental Wellness requires first-time customers to sign up as members. They offer a free membership, and the membership provides free access to a wide range of holistic services such as yoga classes, meditation, and most importantly, weekly grow club classes. Grow club classes are specifically designed for members who want to learn how to grow their own cannabis plants. At Elemental Wellness, these classes are taught by the owner of a nearby hydroponics store called Agem Hydroponics. The instructor takes members through the grow process all the way from the seed state to the flowering state at the wellness center. Once the flowering state is reached, members are allowed to take some of the leaves home and continue the grow process on their own, while Elemental continues to provide additional support through various tools such as their online home growers guide. Currently, Elemental Wellness does not have a public-private partnership with the City of San Jose, but they are working very closely with the Santa Clara community to provide education to seniors regarding the holistic benefits of cannabis use. Next, I will be presenting policy option three. Option three is in response to the growing number of reports that have emerged since Proposition 64 came into effect this year of home growers unknowingly buying and using commonly sold pesticides and fungicides on their cannabis plants. This poses an immediate public health hazard, not only for the City of Emeryville, but for the entire state of California. Therefore, option three proposes that the City Council lobby state legislators and the Department of Pesticide Regulations in order to add warning labels on pesticide and fungicide products that are currently sold and that are not safe for the use of cannabis home growth. In conclusion, the three options that we are proposing to the City Council tonight with regards to the promotion of public health in cannabis home growth are, one, does the City Council wish to engage in a public education campaign? Two, does the City Council want to develop a public-private partnership with local wellness centers and dispensaries? And three, does the City Council want to lobby on behalf of state legislation? Thank you very much for your time, and we will now be taking questions.
So, that was fantastic. You did it with brevity and clarity, and I really appreciate that. It's a really key point in good policy execution. So, what I'd like to do is if you would just step to the side because we are going to take questions, I want to invite the public comment so you can actually hear what members of the public might have to say about the presentation, and you can -- of the public might have to say about the presentation, and you can hear how they weigh in before we ask questions, okay? Just take one step to the side. At this time, I will open this matter for public comment. It's a presentation, so I'm going to limit the public comment to two minutes per speaker so that we can move into the agenda. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, they may do so. Thought maybe we'd have one speaker. I was like, who might in this room step up? Mr. Azimi, how are you?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Thanks again for the opportunity, and would like to thank the presenters for bringing this idea to the table. I think, you know, as California law permits, every individual and household has a right to basically cultivate cannabis in their home front. And that aspect of the situation obviously favors better understanding of the product in terms of what it is and what it is not, as a matter of the educational scenario that we implement in Emeryville and across the state where we have presence. One thing that I would like to make you aware of is that home grows have been tried before, and in that context, they can become somewhat of a headache in the context of what's needed, the infrastructure that's needed to properly grow the plant so that it creates the type of results that one is looking for. One idea that I discussed with the students is that perhaps the city can get behind establishing a commercial facility somewhere whereby the cannabis operators would pool a resource and do sort of a community garden, if you will. It would be an indoor facility, retrofitted with all the capabilities that a commercial facility uses to grow organic and well-established and controlled cannabis, and in that context, it would provide guidance and directions to folks that have an interest to grow their own cannabis and come to that facility, get some education, leverage the infrastructure, and make sure that their end product is not tainted or laced with harmful scenarios. And in that context, we would also sponsor testing their products so that they have access to good quality end results. Just a food for thought and recommendation. I'd be happy to spearhead that. We actually have a similar operation in Sacramento. We have grow chambers that we offer folks that are operating in the underground, and I gave you a presentation of that before during the permitting process, where underground operators are invited to come into our facility and leverage our infrastructure with no capitalization and establish themselves as entrepreneurs within cultivation arena. That idea can very well be implemented in City of Emeryville if permitted correctly so that we can pool our cannabis resources and make that offer to community members that want to grow their own cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Nasser. Other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to invite you all back up to the microphone. And at this time, council, we were asked if we want to consider these three things, but before I ask you your opinion on any of them, I thought maybe we'd take questions, and I'd like to invite Councilmember Martinez to go first.
Thank you so much for this great presentation. It was really good to get a deep dive into this topic. A few questions. So, could one of you or more of you go into the background of why you're recommending indoor grows only for home grows?
Yes, I will take that question. We analyzed the traffic pattern around the City of Emeryville, and you're surrounded by many highways and many highly-trafficked ulterior routes. We were concerned about different particulate matter that would be in the cannabis if it was grown outside. It was with the concern of public health lens ultimately why we're recommending only indoor growth.
Okay. My next question is for myclobutanol. Is the concern about myclobutanol, where does it come from? Is it, has it been found to be used on home grows? How do we get this information?
Ingrid will address that question.
So, as I previously stated, there have been emerging reports of home growers using myclobutanol. It's very commonly known as Eagle 20, and it's very readily accessible and cheap, and it's very highly effective as a fungicide killer for other plants that you can grow at home, like tomatoes or anything you would want to grow, but once you heat it, you change the chemical structure of it, and that's when the harmful effects are happening. And there have been reports, not in California, but in other states, that home growers are already having health effects due to the use of myclobutanol.
And then, this question might be for Ingrid again, since you were the one who reported on wellness centers. Can you confirm if the, the, the classes that they teach on growing the plants, if that's organic, or if they're using pesticides, or which, you know, certain select pesticides that maybe aren't as harmful?
Yes. I don't know if they're specifically all organic. There are different oils that can be used and that can substitute these fungicides and pesticides. There are holistic ways of protecting your cannabis plant, and the unique thing about Elemental is that the owner of Agem Hydroponics, that is a very commonly-used method of cannabis growth indoors, and hydroponic systems are very complicated, and they do require a lot of money and a lot of expertise. So I think that they offer something unique in that they're having an expert come in and take members through the grow process.
And then, my last question is for option number three, for lobbying for state action. The products that would get these warnings for use on cannabis, are they, are they safe, are they considered safe to use on home garden foods?
They are.
Okay.
They're considered safe until you heat them up or try to-
If you were to roll a blunt or bake them in a brownie, that's the problem.
But if you were to, if you were to spray it on your tomato and then wash your tomato and cook your tomato, that's considered a safe use?
Yes.
Does that understand me?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for those great questions. Member Donahue, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Member Pats?
No, but excellent job.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Just one. Have any other states introduced legislation or done, created working groups to look at legislation that specifically addresses this issue?
Emeryville will address that.
So, when we were looking at other states to try to emulate a sort of like education program, we were mostly looking at the State of Oregon. We did not go as far as seeing what they're trying to do in terms of like providing support groups. They, I know that the State of Oregon, specific cities do have like a hotline sort of situation where people can call in terms of like assistance in terms of home grow in Oregon, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had all my questions answered, and I wanted to just respond to the comment from the public. The, the idea of community facility in Emeryville that was, was raised among, you gave us four options when we met, and maybe you'd like to speak to what considerations we discussed at that time and why we removed that one from the list.
I will address that one.
Sure.
So, I, we did propose a cooperative growth space in the City of Emeryville. We discussed that the capital costs of investment on that would be very, very high, and the ongoing cost of electricity and upkeep and the center location, centering a location could cause safety concerns in that neighborhood where it would be located. That's high-level overview of why it was chosen not to move forward to bring to you today.
A lot of cost to operate as a city-run facility or owned facility, yes.
Right. And where would that budget come from? Would it be diverted from other needs?
Great. So I'd just like to ask the council, just at a high level, since we, this was a piece of unfinished business that we discussed last time, does anybody have interest in any of these three options? And if so, which ones? Scott?
Well, immediately, we-
Oh, I'm sorry. May I not do that?
If we can just-
Because it's a presentation, you don't want me to do that.
That's correct. So, this is agendized as a presentation, so the council can't take action tonight.
So, we can't take any action tonight, but these are great questions, and they will come back.
Thank you.
But I want to thank you for coming out this evening. I want to thank you for all the work you put into it. I want to tell your professor to give you all As, and we'll, it's been proclaimed. It's amazing what you can do sometimes. And just thank you for your participation in this, and I hope that you found the experience of working through that process, providing feedback, and then having a chance to see how a public agency minus the actual debate on the issue, how a public agency receives this was helpful to you, and I wish you the best of luck in your studies and your careers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Okay, item number five is the announcement of committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have any vacancies to announce tonight, gladly, but I do want to announce one last time that two days from now, on Thursday, November 15th, we will be celebrating our appreciation of our committee and commission members at a giving thanks event, starts at 5:30 at the Emeryville Senior Center and runs till about 8:00. There will be games and prizes and food from Wally's. So even if you haven't RSVP'd, I padded our reservations a little bit to allow for latecomers, so please feel free to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Special Announcements or Reports on Meetings and Attendance. Member Pats?
Not at this time.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, this week, I attended the Tom Bates Sports Complex, JPA, in Berkeley, and we saw the most amazing protest sign on our way there. Berkeley really knows how to protest. But I did have a report out from that committee. They asked every member city to consider potentially doubling the amount that we pay into, stop guys, that JPA, because after asking for more money to completely re-assure turf all of those five fields out past the Gilman Street exit, they now realize that they need a sports clubhouse and some bathrooms, because apparently they just have porta-potties out there, gross. And the projected cost of this would be quite high. They've got $250,000 from a grant allocated to do the design, but the actual build-out of this would be significant, and so they're asking for doubling the fees, which would still not cover anywhere near what the actual build-out would be. I told them I would bring this to my city council, and I hope you don't mind me taking the liberty to give them some early feedback that our city council would probably be more inclined to accept this if we looked at population or use as a percentage of fees.
Future agenda item, perhaps?
Mr. Mayor, yes, actually, we were contacted by the JPA, and we, I was going to meet with the vice mayor and bring forward an item. We need some staff research. We've also made some information requests to them about usage projections, so we will be asking the council to schedule an agenda item in the future.
Great.
Okay, but I want to thank the vice mayor for being our front line of defense against all things coming from that JPA, so, thank you.
Always.
Do you have other meetings to report?
I went to BikeTopia right after that meeting, actually, and they had a giant map that showed, an actual virtual reality headset where you could see the new proposed connection for bikes across the span of the Bay Bridge. They left the City of Emeryville off of that map.
What?
That is my report and announcement. I am aghast and disappointed. I immediately grabbed a Post-it and put it on all maps present to reclaim our space.
And see, I will be having words with Dave Campbell soon. Dave, if you're not watching, you will be watching very shortly. Thank you for that feedback. And report, Councilmember Martinez?
This is not on meeting attended. It's a meeting, I am attending tomorrow. I am our Emeryville representative at Stop Waste. We're doing our priority setting tomorrow, and I think I've brought this up once before, but I just wanted to confirm with council that I will be suggesting that the agency move in the direction of sponsoring legislation to firm up extended producer responsibility in order to reduce plastics upstream. So the plastics, all of those things that come entombed in plastic in our Amazon packages, this is something that we could each work on individually, but why don't we have, you know, the same producers who are making promises in the, in the European Union to get plastics out of their waste streams? They're the same multinational conglomerates. They can do it here, too. So I just wanted to let you guys know that is the direction that I'm pushing that body in.
I love that, like, Vice Mayor Medina, Councilmember Martinez, just like rolling up the sleeves, they're like, let's go. What are you doing, Member Donahue?
I'm sorry to report, I haven't anything to report.
I have, so, while Vice Mayor Medina and Councilmember Martinez are like, like, taking people down, my report is a positive one, so, different, I get to bring the happy news. So I have a couple of things to report. One, I'm the Chair of the Policy Planning and Legislation Committee at the Alameda County Transportation Commission. I had my briefing with staff today for our agenda for next week for our committee meeting, and I just want to let the City of Emeryville know, and we don't have anyone here from Emory Unified, but the Student Transit Pass Program has been in a pilot format for, we're in our third year, and we currently are only serving 21 schools in all of Alameda County with that program, and it's been ramping up. But we have made a push, and I'm very pleased to announce that the proposal that will go before the committee is when we adopt the full program next year, that Emory Unified School District's middle and high school students would get discounted and free transit passes to ride AC Transit, which would greatly improve accessibility for our students to school and to after-school programs, and that would involve registration through AC Transit in the fall at Emory Unified. So that's in the works. I'm very happy to report that. And the other thing is, we don't have another meeting in November this month, so I just want the public to know that on November 29th at 3:30 PM, we will have a small celebration and dedication event to open the new Christie Park. And you may recall, we delayed that originally from its original date at the request of the public market to allow the sod to kind of get rooted in, and it has had a soft opening. It's a very well-loved park, and so we will have a small event in the afternoon on Thursday, November 29th, and we hope you'll join us. Okay, with that, the city managers' report.
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor, for mentioning the Christie Park event. We are planning that for 3:30 in the afternoon, just for the council's information, so we can bring some of the kids over from our after-school programs, so that's the plan for that day. We hope everyone can join us. That's all.
Okay. Ex parte communications. Member Donahue, do you have any?
Uh, no.
Member Martinez? Member Pats?
Nope.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Nope.
Nope, I don't have any to report at this time either, so we'll move to public comment for the consent agenda, items not on this agenda. Sharon Wilcher.
So, this will just take a minute, but I wanted to thank Public Works for their support, their responsiveness, their cooperation regarding the art exhibition. A lot happens before opening night, and even after the final afternoon, and if Nasser was still here, he would, he would recognize the fact that our temporary walls just left his space last Friday. So I, but I do want to thank, publicly thank Public Works for the crew, for Jamal, Louis, Ken, Tony, and others. It just, it's so much appreciated, so, thanks.
Thank you, Sharon, and thank you for putting on another fantastic show this year. Any other members of the public for open public comment? Seeing none, we're at the consent calendar. Members, are there anything to pull, or otherwise I'll take a motion?
Second.
Motion by Member Martinez, and second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar.
Martinez, Medina.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye, thank you. Consent calendar is approved. There are no public hearings this evening. We're going to move to item 12.4 out of order, as approved in the agenda, and that's the introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Emeryville and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System with respect to public safety employees. We've waived presentation on this, this item. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on item 12.4? Public comment is open now. Seeing and hearing none, council members, is there discussion? If not, because it's the first reading of an ordinance, I'll entertain a motion to read by title only.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
There's a motion by Member Martinez and a second by Member Donahue to read, to approve, I'm sorry, to read this ordinance by title only. Mr. City, Madam Clerk, I always do this wrong. Madam Clerk first, please.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye, thank you. Madam, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Emeryville and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System, PERS, with respect to public safety employees.
Thank you. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I move that we approve the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Member Donahue, second by Member Martinez to approve this ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Thank you, Lisa, for being here. Okay. Item 12.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving the Emeryville Transportation Management Association's 2019 budget and setting compensation to- Transportation Management Association's 2019 budget and setting compensation to the TMA to operate the Emory Go-Round Shuttle service during the 2019 calendar year under the Terms of Service Agreement for an amount not to exceed $3,581,271, and authorizing payment from the Emeryville Property-Based Business Improvement District Fund 805. Susan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. For your consideration, tonight is the TMA budget for service year 2019. Staff recommends that the City Council approve the TMA budget totaling $5.2 million. The TMA board approved the budget on October 18th. Staff also recommends that the City Council approve the P-bid compensation to TMA for $3.6 million. Ronnie from TMA is here to answer any questions you may have about the budget.
Thank you. Are there questions about the budget before I take public comment? Seeing none, at this time the matter is open for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item have three minutes to do so. Hi, Ronnie.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to answer any questions, but I did just want to take a moment to thank you, Mayor Bouters, for all of the efforts that you've put into the last year of collecting outstanding P-bid revenue. I know you spent a lot of time and effort on this, so we just wanted to, on behalf of the TMA board, thank you for that.
You're very welcome, and I believe we're down to just a couple accounts that are unpaid from the large properties that were delinquent, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And I want to thank Emory Unified School District for going into a compliance agreement with us to repay, and I want to thank the staff, and I know that a number of people on staff and the prior city manager worked with me very carefully and closely to get all of those accounts current. And so, just for clarification purposes, all those arrears that we collected, have those already been remitted over to you at the half-year, or are they being remitted at the end of the year to you?
They have not been yet.
They have, so the next payment they will go through?
As far as I know, it sounds like Susan and I have been in coordination, and we'll figure out the timing of that payment remittance. As far as I know, we are actually only set up to receive the funds that you're approving today, the P-bid funds. So the monies that are outstanding and collected will go into the city's P-bid account, and will sit there until the TMA needs to draw on those funds above what is currently authorized in our budget today.
Okay, and so I know that you're proposing to operate out of reserves a little bit in the coming year?
Yes, that's correct.
So do you not want the monies that we recaptured that were due to you in this current cycle, or are you going to be evaluating that further?
So we will be using our reserves for the 2019 calendar year. I do expect that we will need those funds in 2020, as we hopefully complete the construction of our bus yard in calendar year 2020. So we'll be likely looking for those funds at that time.
And there's, in the reserves that you operate out of right now, a million of that is set aside for that yard, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we have a million designated, of which a portion of those funds are included in this budget to begin construction next year. $500,000 we've got budgeted. In addition, we'll be working with the city to hopefully get the funds that the city has in the budget for the bus yard as well. The TMA has sufficient reserves designated to get us started for construction in 2019, assuming that we do begin construction, let's see, in the fall, which is our target date. So the remaining funding would be needed in calendar year 2020 to complete the construction of our bus yard.
And do we, and if you can't answer this, I understand, but are we close to an agreement with Caltrans on terms for a site for that permanent yard?
We will be closer in December when we go to CTC. They have to approve, basically, they have to authorize Caltrans to negotiate an airspace lease agreement with us, and so...
State CTC?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we'll begin the negotiation process at a local level with Caltrans District Four, and we've also, will be filing our permit with the City of Oakland on Monday, so we are doing a major conditional use permit, so we're making headway there. I think in December we'll have more answers in terms of whether the CTC approves the local authority to negotiate our lease terms with Caltrans for the long term, because it's a long-term lease, a 30-year lease.
Okay. Do other members have questions for Ronnie? Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, is, are you able to share with us what the site is that you've identified for the bus yard?
Of course, yes. So Mandela Parkway behind the Extended Stay America, there's a large Caltrans space under the Maze Freeway. We're looking at that entire site, not completely all the way back to Hollis Street, but a majority of the portion of it that's usable, that we could maneuver our vehicles around those columns. So that's the site that's been identified, and we've completed our kind of conceptual design, and we're looking at starting our next phase of design within the next few weeks, I think, and we'll be looking at finalizing our design mid-next year.
And another question is, is, might the design contemplate future electrification of the fleet?
Yes, very good question. That's going to be included. The infrastructure, having just the conduit set in the asphalt and everything, we won't have the funding for the actual charging stations, but playing the groundwork, yes, yeah. Definitely interested in having that as part of the package, because we would like to look at electric vehicles in the future, and the infrastructure is really important for that.
I'm very happy to hear that. And my one last question is, do you have an estimate of how much it would cost to maintain the bus yard once it's built?
Not yet, no. I'm, we currently maintain our existing sites, and it's rather nominal considering our total budget, I think our bus yard, looking at it right here, our total budget for the entire yard, including the maintenance, is about $150,000. So the bus yard maintenance is rather nominal. Where I see that we'll probably have an additional cost with the new yard is security, so expanding the security, having a better life, and that'll be part of the construction project, but security is probably one of the things that we'll be looking at.
Right. And very last question.
It's the third time you've said that. That's okay.
I appreciate the TMA and Emory Go-Round, and it's such a great asset to our community. I do have a little bit of a worry every year when I see that you guys are running a shortfall and dipping into your reserves. Can you speak to, I understand that there's some capital improvements that are considered in this budget, but can you speak to forecasting, you know, the next five years out, or up through 2023, you know, that we have budgeting for, like, and how you see those budgets?
Absolutely. So I wish I could have included it here in this packet, but we do have an outlook of through the end of the P-bid. When we set our budget to establish the P-bid initially, we had included a large amount to bring us up to an amount that would allow us to build up reserves of the first five years of the P-bid, knowing that we would be in the position of needing a new bus yard. We had a lot of unidentified costs, so we've been building up those reserves of the past five years. We have set aside the $1 million, as I've mentioned, and if we run the model out over time, using a 5% growth for Emory Go-Round every year, which is historically what it has been, if you averaged it out, with a 3% increase per year committed to the P-bid revenue increase, we come in just at level at the end of the, at the end of the P-bid term. So I'm happy to share that forecast with you. We shared it with the board, I think, and I think it was in, like, the August timeframe, so I do have that.
That's fine, as long as I know that there's a strategy behind the ways that these budgets have come through. I just, without that information, what I see is year after year of a shortfall, but if that's planned for, then I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I would add to that, just a couple things. One, I want to thank you for your stewardship of the TMA, and I know I'm a member of the board here, and I want to thank you, Betsy Cooley, as well, and all the members of the board for working with myself and staff this past year. So to Councilmember Martinez's really excellent last question, one of the reasons we went to recoup hundreds of thousands of dollars of unpaid money from direct bills was to exactly deal with what she's just speaking to, which is, the budget that you outlaid at the outset of the P-bid contemplated collecting those funds, and so not collecting those funds would lead to a long-term problem for the operation of the TMA. And I just want to add on also that I've had ongoing conversations with the TMA board about electrification of buses and the ability to bring in all 100% green vehicles. There's money at the Air District, and I sit on the Air District Board to do that. There are grants to do that, and something that we've been very open about, talking about, is the need to really nail down the new yard, put in the proper security features, and then do the electrification as pre-conditions, because in the end, those could lead to reduced costs potentially long-term for the TMA, which also protects itself if we can electrify properly. And there are new models and fleets, and we have to look at that more carefully, but it's kind of, that's the cart, and we're at the horse right now, so I just want to thank you for continuing to work on this. It's really important to have good transit funding and infrastructure in the city, and the community is grateful.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Nope? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on approving the budget for the TMA.
I think it would make sense if you made that motion, Mayor.
I would like to make a motion to approve the budget for the TMA, and I would like to thank the TMA for working so closely with me and for staff and their support.
And with that, I'll second it.
Thank you. There's a motion by Member Bouters and a second by Member Pats to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye, and if you have any challenges with State CTC, please let me know immediately, okay? Thank you. All right. Item 12.2 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the city manager to execute an exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Orton Development Incorporated for the purpose of negotiating a lease disposition and development agreement for the redevelopment and operation of 4060 Hollis Street as an art center. And is it going to be Emmy or Chad? Who's gonna? Emmy.
Good evening, Mayor Bouters and members of council. So would you like a presentation, or would you just like me to answer any questions that you have?
That's a great question. Members, do you need a presentation on this tonight?
Wave presentation.
I have one request to wave. Yes, do you have it?
Wave.
Wave, does anyone have questions? Okay, Emmy, you can just hang out for a second, and we'll hear from the public.
Okay, and I should tell you that David Dial of Orton Development is here this evening.
I didn't see him in the back of the room so tall. I see you there, David. This is open for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item have three minutes to do so. Are there any members who wish to speak on this? Sharon's like, "Well, I didn't sit around here for nothing."
Just to say how excited I am about this?
Yes.
To think about, I don't know, not having to work with our temporary walls anymore, and thinking about the energy that can go, you know, many things that I'd like to see happen with the art exhibition that just seem to get eaten up by trying to find a space and moving things in and out of storage, et cetera. So this is very, very exciting, and certainly, you know, several years ago, when we had the nonprofit for the Center for the Arts, was on that board, and I just know, you know, and I think this will come from more community meetings, what this will provide for the city, some sort of, not some sort, but wonderful programming year-round, the possibility for performance, I mean, I just think it's, it's been a long time coming, and I'm just very, very excited about it.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Is there any discussion? Member Donahue?
I just wanted to say that there's some reason for optimism with Orton Development Company. They had someone at the art show studying our takedown and installation, and I appreciate that, doing the necessary work. That's very good.
Thank you, Member Donahue. Others? I just want to echo what Sharon said and just say I'm really pleased, I want to thank the council, and I really want to thank Emmy and Chad. When we started this at the beginning of the year and asked, fought to put this on the agenda, if you recall, we've worked on this really long way, and it's just been such a longstanding promise to this community, and so congratulations to you, David, and the folks at Orton, and I'm just super excited that we are at a point of really moving this forward tonight. This is something I'm really proud of, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I move the resolution.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Member Donahue and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Congratulations, and yay for everybody, we're getting an art center here soon, hopefully. Yes, you can clap for that. Okay. Item 12.3 is the Economic Development Strategy Annual Implementation Report.
Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, Chad Ricksmalley, Economic Development and Housing Manager, perfect segue, really, to begin with the first steps of a project that's really core to our economic development strategy, and now to be able to review over the last year what we have been doing, what we've been working on, what we've accomplished. And so I'm going to go over a little bit of background, why we're here, and talk about just some very brief economic context, so that we know where we're at in terms of metrics, key performance metrics. And then I'm going to highlight areas of progress in implementing the economic development strategy, and then bring it to a close. So it was a little over a year ago, we brought the Economic Development Strategy to the city council, but the work on that document stretched back well the year prior. The EDAC, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, or EDAC, had established a subcommittee to work with me to update our existing economic development strategy, and it was intended to be, and is, a framework for the deployment of our economic development resources, and it became, during those discussions, it became clear that we needed an overall guiding principle to tie these things together. We knew what the activities to be done were, but we needed a lens to view them through, and that's what makes it strategic. In some ways, the effort to develop that strategy culminated in May of 2017 with the joint study session of the city council and the Planning Commission, an initiative spearheaded by then Planning Commissioner Bouters, then Mayor, and we, as you'll recall, formatted that meeting as a listening session and just took comment from the businesses, and it was extraordinarily well-attended, and that input formed the basis for the economic development strategy, which we brought back to you in October. The overall arching theme, just as, by way of reminder, is to maintain and enhance Emeryville's economic status by leveraging its competitive advantage as a city of art and innovation. This is our space to claim, and it is, Mayor Bouters put it so well, when he said we tied our economic future to our community, right? Our community values are manifested in this phrasing. So that was adopted in October, and this economic development strategy is not like most cities' economic development strategies. It's much broader. It goes into affordable housing. It talks about all, I think appropriately, it's much broader than a typical economic development strategy, which many times they focus on business retention, expansion, and workforce development. We do that, but we go far beyond that with the actions. Little bit of economic context, going back the prior five years, and none of this is going to be news to you, and it pretty much tracks with the region. Retail vacancies are down, consequently, the retail rents are up. There's a little blip in vacancies. We believe that to be the Toys R Us, which, as you all know, has been, since been leased, and Decathlon Sports will be opening their first full-size store in the United States shortly, and so we expect that last tick in that chart to move back down.
Can you, can I ask a question on that slide real quick? Just, I'm trying to figure out what the metrics on the vertical sides are?
It's a percentage. So the vacancy rate was at, was below 1% at 2017. That's essentially, everything's full and there is no room for anybody.
In the right chart, the rates, the rental rates, is that like?
That's two, per square foot, triple net. So it's, and so those have climbed up now to the point where we're above $3 a square foot.
Okay, thank you.
On average.
And the vacancy rate, it's the same thing, per square footage.
Yes, that's total square footage divided, yeah, is the denominator. Same thing for office. Office vacancy is extraordinarily low. I actually don't know exactly why that particular drop in vacancy. I suspect it's from the Zimergen lease of many of that space that was formerly occupied by Jamba Juice, but I'm not positive of that. And of course, you see a corresponding raise in rents, around $3.50 a square foot for rents in office space here.
Question? Geography of the East Bay, when you, is that Alameda County?
East Bay is Alameda County and Contra Costa County combined.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry about that. I shouldn't have mentioned that. And you know that sales tax, sales tax receipts are leveling off. They continue to grow, which is a positive, but we've many times, many meetings, we've talked about the overall challenges facing retail. I think this is instructive, though, because we haven't added a tremendous amount of new retail square footage in the last couple of years. This is, so we're seeing the receipts level off, but some of that could be due to the fact that we're not adding, not nearly the capacity we're adding in 2013, '14. Unemployment likewise is extraordinarily low. When it is at that 2%, 2.5% level, we're in the territory of frictional unemployment, and that is almost a natural churn of people leaving and finding new jobs. It's not a comprehensive, it's not a dissertation on the econometrics of Emeryville, but I think it is instructive and good to start with what is the situation. So I'm going to go through, you recall that the economic development strategy is arranged by these very broad topic areas, and it narrows down into areas, I'm sorry, it's areas, then topics, and then actions. And then the very last level of detail is called detail, and it's the actions that we're focusing on in the report that's attached to your staff report. I'm only going to highlight the major ones. Some of the things, the day-to-day operations that we do, calling prospective businesses and helping, you know, visiting new businesses, those kinds of things I view as sort of core services, and so I haven't included them in here, but they are included. All of those discussions are included in the report. So under the infrastructure and transportation topic, one of the things that we heard loudest at the Small Business Joint Study Session was parking is an issue, and you need to do something to rationalize it and deal with it. And as you all know, we've spent a lot of time doing that this past year, and we're not out of the woods yet. But we're, we have done a lot of work, and we've had over 200 comments from the community on this topic. And many, many, many meetings, and you all have probably each individually received 200 comments each. So it's ongoing. We've collected good data. We are moving forward with managing our parking resources. We also, apropos of the budget discussion today, we were able to obtain a grant from the Air District from their shuttle program to support the Watergate Express Road, to the tune of about $240,000. And we did that under our economic development hat in the city, because Emery around is extraordinarily important to employers here. And it is the one thing that is always mentioned when I meet with new businesses or existing businesses, that is one of the things they love about this city. And so we're happy to have participated in helping obtain that grant. We also obtained a technical assistance grant, which isn't money, but is people and time to evaluate, and this kind of rose out of the parking management, to evaluate how our curb frontages are used. And that's an effort that's just beginning to start, and MTC has supplied some consultant help for us to take a novel approach at valuing what that public space alongside the curb is. And so those were the major highlights in transportation and infrastructure. In marketing promotions, it's the largest section of the plan. You'll recall there's a lot of input from various quarters that led to a lot of actions in marketing and promotion. We concluded our developer selection for the art center. That's one of the actions under this topic area. We also continued administration of facade grant and fee rebate programs, fairly recently, actually, approved $200,000 worth of facade grants. Those are being worked on as we speak. And we have issued, since the initiation of the Business License and Fire Inspection Fee Rebate Program, we've issued about $8,000 worth of rebates. The small, and it's only eligible for independent, small retailer and restaurant businesses. They really appreciate this program. We asked them in the survey, when they fill out their applications, you know, whether they actually value the program, and they all universally, they appreciate it. And it's actually been a useful tool in promoting us and in promoting new businesses to come here. We have, well, on Friday, the art and innovation theme, the story of this city as a place where art and innovation coexist in a unique way, will be transmitted out to 18,000 subscribers of the San Francisco Business Times in an advertorial supplement that I think you'll be happy to see. You'll all get copies of it. And the reason, one of the reasons we did this is this is the first time we're really stepping out with that messaging. It's been well-received within the community. You all have been great help in promoting that. This is the next step, and is one of many steps. This piece includes profiles of a number of businesses, and it provides me with a printed collateral piece that's up to date, that I can better tell the story of the city when I'm meeting with new and prospective businesses. So we're very excited about that. It was a lot of work, and it took a lot of partners in the, in the community and business community to make that happen, and that will be published Friday. We've also established partnership with SAE Expression College, their film school, to develop video content promoting the city through the Real Emeryville. We call it the Real Emeryville Program, and we have a student working right now on a promotional piece that it will be suitable for airing on ETV and on YouTube and other social media platforms. We expect to see the rough cuts of that work being produced at the end of this year for publication and dissemination next year. We also have initiated the Inside Out Program, brainchild of Councilmember Donahue, trying to bring the stories of behind walls outside, and to talk about the great things that are happening, but that aren't really customer-facing. Well, we have engaged with a developer of smartphone-guided tours, and through an audio and visual representation, folks will be able to learn more about what our cultural district partners do in the city behind closed doors, and they'll include links to the app and the QR code on the different stops on the tour. And so that's our foray into that. That's being funded by the stipend from the Cultural District, from the state. So all of these things, you know, we've also run the inserts, and we've made the tablecloth and all of the little print things around the Cultural District. But really, the Cultural District has been a nice thread to tie through all these activities. Art Center, through the discussions in the Business Times insert, and through these discussions with Real Emeryville and the Inside Out Programs, they all tie together under this art and innovation mantra. Under community advancement, this is an area, this is where our economic development strategy is pretty broad. And we include affordable housing as an important component of the city's economic health. We've continued monitoring the construction of Australia Vista, the 87 units of affordable housing there. We've also provided support for housing, for the housing bond, $50 million housing bond approved by the voters in June, and will continue to be very involved in that, as that funds the next generation of projects like Australia Vista and others. We were able to secure another technical assistance grant from MTC regarding anti-displacement, and this was something they were very excited about. It looks at unified wait lists. How can we keep people within Emeryville so when they, life circumstances put them out of their income range for their unit, and maybe there isn't one in their development, at least they could stay in the city? And that's something we'll be looking at, as well as other tools to implement the housing bond. We have participated in STEM Day and Manufacturing Day events with Emory High students. The Manufacturing Day events in particular were pretty fascinating. We brought folks to companies creating software for manufacturers here in Emeryville, working for Ford. We brought them to Jared's Pottery. So two very different types of manufacturing activity, one high-tech and one very low-tech, and to see how the different groups of students lit up to when they realized that a career could be made from some of these things that they found interesting. It was, made the entire endeavor worthwhile.
It didn't hurt, it didn't hurt when we told them how much they got paid, too.
That, that was a salient point. And thanks to the mayor for giving the comments to the group that participated. We also held Ford Labor Standards Workshop, continue our monitoring on the various labor standards, minimum wage, paid sick leave, and Fair Work Week, Measure C. And in holding those workshops, continue to try to educate the business population about what they need to be doing. We also coordinated with our other counterparts in other cities around here, because a lot of the issues we share in implementing these are shared with these other cities. During the course of this year, we've investigated approximately, or in the process of investigating approximately, 10 complaints that have come in under various versions of those standards. For organization network building, we established the BizNexus Networking Event Series, and these have been really well-received. It's, I'm continually fascinated by this, because they're relatively straightforward events. It's just get people together to talk about their, you know, experiences and to meet other people that do business in the same city. And without exception, everyone that has gone to these and has commented, has said they're great. This is where we don't have a Chamber of Commerce, and the city is stepping in and fulfilling one of the goal, one of the main services that a chamber provides, is in facilitating those contacts. And we'll continue to do them. We've had approximately 200 folks attend those meetings, if we include the first one, the jingle mingle back in December of '17. We also continue to participate in other events and networking opportunities that are more industry-specific, so the East Bay EDA Innovation Awards. I've nominated, I think, five or six companies from Emeryville, four of those, working with them to get them hopefully recognized if they can, it's a very competitive process. We also participate in sponsoring industry-specific events held by BioCom, which is a Life Sciences Industry Association, and Pilot City. I judged a pitch contest by Pilot City, which is high school students partnered with tech firms and cities to solve government problems. Was instructive, and we're working with Pilot City to see what kinds of partnerships are potentially available here with Emory High, with our tech businesses, and with the city. And those discussions are ongoing. We also continued our partnership with the City of Berkeley in sponsoring Life Sciences events for our shared life science business community. And we participated in the Bay Area Urban Manufacturing Initiative, the most visible outcome of that being the Manufacturing Day Promotion Events, but also included a business retention survey of Emeryville manufacturers that was done, actually at a regional scale. That data fed into SF Maids' report on urban manufacturing in the Bay Area, and we continue to work with them on other aspects that promote the Bay Area as a good place to make things. That's the big stuff, maybe not obvious, but the bigger things that are out there. There's lots of other items in that report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on any of them, and take your feedback on both on the report itself. I felt like it was important, like, it is, important to continue to remind ourselves what we adopted after all of that work in 2017, and show that we are moving forward on various fronts on that document. So I'm hopeful to be able to do this again a year from now and have even more good news to report. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
At this time, are there clarifying questions before public comment? No? Thank you, Chad. This is open for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak have three minutes to do, so. Seeing none, I'll bring it back for discussion. It's listed as a report. Is there an action item on this? It's under action items. I'm just curious if we need to take any action? No?
No, Mayor Bouders, just accept the report. Is the...
I can just accept it, or we need a motion to accept it?
If you like.
Motion to accept it? Okay, we will. Before we do that, discussion member, Pats?
You know, I serve on the EDAC. As we reported out today, I had nothing to report, because both of my meetings are tomorrow. And in conflict, so I won't, this is for Bill, who's not listening, but I will not be there tomorrow, because I'm at the Housing Committee meeting. But I was fortunate to be there on the 19th, when we reviewed this plan with Chad, and you know, I have to say, the EDAC comes out in force. They really did give some great input on this report. And I was also at the Nexus Meeting, as you were, Mayor, and a few others of you. Just an incredible event, and so I just, I think this work is important, and Chad, you've done a great job spearheading this, and so I just, those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, I'd like to echo those comments. I think the BizNexus events have been phenomenal. No, just that it's good. Have been really phenomenal. And at the last one I attended, I met an Annie Yates teacher who teaches art classes, and she was asking, she really wants to find studio space and maybe teach art classes in Emeryville, and I was like, "Oh, here's Sharon." And it was just a really easy connection. She was so excited to meet her and get firsthand feedback about how she could start doing this in Emeryville. And for her, it was a really useful resource, and it's great to see a teacher be empowered to get even more involved in our community. So great work, Chad.
Member Donahue?
Well, I just think this is a good synthesizing direction for our city. I think that, well, it's just everything I could wish for our economic direction. You know, I love everything about the moniker art and innovation, and having visited some of the bio-life science innovation in our city and other tech innovations in our city, I just find it a thrilling environment to make art in. So, you know, I'm a happy camper here.
Member Martinez?
I just want to thank Chad, the rest of staff, and the members of the EDAC for putting this together, and I think it's obvious that Emeryville is a very good place to be for the community and for businesses alike.
I would just like to round out the group and thank Chad for all your work this past year. I appreciate, and Charlie, actually, as well, since back in the Planning Commission days, before it was called BizNexus, I was an annoying person to some people on staff, because I was like, "We need to do these quarterly things," and we are doing them, and I'm happy to hear that people love them. I have had the same feedback. I'm really excited about the San Francisco Business Times insert. I think that's a really positive step forward for things that we've heard from the business community. I want to thank staff for integrating the housing bond, and I look forward to working on the next steps of that. And I want to thank Member Pats for his work on the EDAC, and all the members of that committee who volunteer their time, because I agree with Councilmember Martinez, when you look at these statistics that we have up here, you know, you get an occasional naysayer out there who says, "This community is hostile to businesses and blah, 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 because they have a progressive approach to a community." Well, you're wrong. Community is doing fantastic, and economically, we're moving forward. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept this report.
I move we accept the report.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Member Pats and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to accept this report. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders.
Aye, thank you. Department head reports. I don't see any items on here. There's no Planning Commission report at this time. Is there any other department head report who wishes, or department head who wishes to report? Seeing none? Future agenda items? Requests from councilmembers? Any hands? Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, honestly, I was just wondering if I could get in either, this could come in whatever shape. It could be an informational report from staff, but I'd like to know where we're at in electrification in terms of our own fleets here at Emeryville, our Public Works fleet, our, you know, well, probably not PD, and not the Fire Department, but any other vehicles that we've got and any progress that we're making in that direction.
Would that be most suited as an update to a committee or a report to the City Council? How would you propose to handle that?
Mr. Mayor, it seems like the Sustainability Committee might be the place for that to start.
Then I would.
Is that okay?
I would recommend that, yes.
Okay, so there's a request to update on the status of the vehicles that are owned by the city and the potential electrification of those vehicles, it sounds like. Is that appropriate?
Correct.
Is there support for that? That's Sustainability Committee? Yes, there's direction to do that. Are there other requests?
Just Gilman Plainfield's one, but I think that's been...
Gilman on the December 4th agenda, is that too soon? Can we do that?
Mr. Mayor, we'll need to get back to you on scheduling that after we get the information we've requested.
Okay. Member Pats?
So I'm more planting a seed than talking future agenda items. As we wind down 2018, our last board goals, although we updated them last year, we're on a cycle that comes to an end. And when we get there, and I've been working with HR and the city manager, one of the things I'm going to be adding is an internal-facing goal. I think when I looked at our goals this last year, so I'm just sort of planting that seed. Like I said, I've been working with the city manager to find the right time, because it's going to align with our budget cycle, but there's no other point, so.
What's an internal-facing goal?
Mr. Mayor, we may be suggesting you have a goal, some kind of goal discussion-setting session, maybe at the end of January, similar to something you may have done, not similar, but timing-wise, early in the year, in 2019, to sort of kick off the two-year budget process. And so that would be an opportunity for you to discuss project goals, how we want to be as a model employer, that kind of, those kind of things as an organization. So the council's goals, the organization's goals.
I think timing that with the onset of preparing for the budget makes a lot of sense. I think that's a good idea, and when you look at the 10 goals we had on the list, I think we take five of them off this year, so I totally think we need to revisit that and look at that inconsistency with our budget. So I support that, and it looks like I have at least three heads. Yep. So we'll do that in January or the most appropriate time thereafter, when staff determines. Okay? Other requests? Madam Clerk, the time is 8:42. We're adjourned.